Authority to order. We are meeting tonight pursuant to the governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, pursuant to which the council and staff are meeting by a live teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID nineteen, members of the public have been asked to watch the meeting livestreamed on the city's website or on wave cable channel twenty and to submit comments in writing prior to the meeting through the city clerk's email address. Those all comments that have been received by the city are available not only to members of the council, but to the public on the city website directly next to the agenda and video, live video feed for tonight's meeting. So the council did meet in closed session this evening for the purpose of conferring with our real property negotiator regarding a parcel at nineteen sixty-six Park Boulevard. And no action was taken to confer with our real property negotiator regarding APN zero four six five three one oh three one at the county of Yolo, no final action was taken, concur with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations. APN zero zero eight one fifty dash oh three one and others on West Capitol Avenue, no final action was taken. All right. So with that, then we'll proceed to item one A, which is presentations by the public on matters, not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. Madam clerk, we have received a public comment on this item. Is that correct?
That is correct. Good evening, Mayor.
All right. And that comment, just as a reminder, is available in its entirety. There's no three minute limit to public comments in the, in, under, under our, our emergency order formats. And so that comment is, is available on the, on the city's website as well. And it's a request for additional information about development projects from Jeremiah Honer, which will ask the city clerk and the director of community development to execute the appropriate response. All right. So then we're going to proceed to item one B, council communications. Are there reports or the communications from our designated assignments listed on the council agenda under item one B? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I attended last Tuesday, this last Tuesday, the Sacramento Valley Section APA, California's virtual SBS awards to receive the award of excellence in the category of innovation in the green community planning for the Yolo Habitat Conservation Plan, the natural community conservation plan, which is definitely an innovation here in Yolo County to, you know, help both protect species and continue to progress in the development of our community.
All right. Thank you. And also a big thanks to councilmember Ledesma, who, who rescued the Yolo Habitat Conservation Plan. It's a longstanding initiative here in Yolo County that we started in cooperation with the cities of Davis, Woodland and Winters and the county of Yolo back in nineteen ninety-nine as one of the first counties in the state to move forward with a habitat conservation plan that rather than having new development projects just by one piece of property, if they were going to bulldoze something that had a hawk habitat or elderberry bush beetle, then they were going to add an acre of habitat somewhere else. And of course, the hawks and the beetles didn't know where to find those. And the parcels didn't, weren't, didn't connect to one another. And it, and it was also incredibly problematic for folks who wanted to build things. So it was the worst of all situations and the habitat conservation plan that we birthed. And the councilmember Ledesma, as the chair of the HCP and their, and their lead financial expert saved when it was on the, on the ropes, really was an attempt to, to try to be much more focused and environmentally sensitive with respect to how we, how we protect species and habitat in Yolo County in a way that maximizes environmental sustainability and the interest of the species. And also streamlined our ability to deliver, you know, levy projects and others in our own community and elsewhere in the county. So thanks to councilmember, councilmember Ledesma, that was, those were some tough, those were some tough months and years where.
But they were worth it. So thanks for reporting back on the award, Martha. But it was, I'll send my congrats to the YCTD. I'm sorry to the Yolo Habitat Conservancy staff who put in a lot of work. And there was a lot of partners involved with that state, county and all our sister cities in the county. So really that's, that's great news. If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll go next.
Please.
Yeah. On this past Monday, the, that was the twelfth was the meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. We had a regular meeting in there. We had considered, we considered extending and we did extend the youth ride program for ride for free program, which has been hugely successful. We talked about, we had a financial status update and it's worth pointing out in that update, sort of, there were some good news in there that the, the district received some unexpected credits for some work it had done through their compressed natural gas programs they have out there. But there's some sobering realities around the state of transit and, but thanks to the CARES Act, there's funding to sort of cover some of those loss of revenues from just fair box revenue, which is down considerably. But, but, but making a slight comeback, but still down year over year from previous times. So it's something we're all watching. I know the executive director's working and something that we had talked about was a, a longer term plan for the district to start doing projections out at least three years to kind of see what, if at certain levels like we do in our city council, we start looking at long-term projections on tax revenues coming this way or that way, or property tax revenues coming this way, that way, or CalFirst payments or whatever come in, we start doing that kind of projections. I've asked, we've asked our executive director to do a similar exercise. And we know transit's hugely important. And so we just want to make sure we have a good picture of that. So that was the main part of it. We also talked about starting to look at service again with the, as a result of the comprehensive operational analysis we did, started last year. Obviously got held up this year as we went towards implementation. So we're going to give it another complete look at again. So there's, our North City will be involved in that as well. It was a really pretty, pretty robust meeting and a first real good one talking about there still is a need for transit in the community and for bus service in the community. And with all of our assets sort of coming back, I know we had jump by the bike system come back, scooter systems are in here. And of course, we're, we're still tracking with SacRT on the streetcar project. There's still lots of options we need, still need to continue planning for. So anyway, so all of that's on our board and we're all, it was a good meeting overall. So that's my report.
Right. Thank you. And we haven't met in a bit. So just to highlight the, and to thank, you know, the, the city, the official position of the city lining up with our election results and also with our, with our tenure work project with Congressman Matsui has been to advance the streetcar project. And I just want to acknowledge Mr. Ledesma and YCTD for their strong leadership on that project in, in a series of Sacramento City Council and Sacramento Regional Transit meetings. And, and I, and I know, I think we all know there, it was a, those were some, some tough meetings as a few folks from our, from our own community were lined up with folks in Sacramento that basically kept saying, there's nothing in West Sacramento to go to and it's a wasteland and it's nothing but a parking lot. Sort of a very like old view of what West Sacramento was. And, you know, there, there was a danger that that, that view would prevail. And I just really wanted to acknowledge councilmember Ledesma and also many members of the Sacramento City Council and other city councils throughout the Sacramento Regional Transit District, members of the county board supervisors, who, who spoke up and stood up and said, no, that we're not, that there, West Sacramento is, is the heart of this region too. And it's essential that there are thousands and thousands of people of all income levels, but especially those who are the most dependent, who need a backbone transit service between the two, the two cities. Thousands of people commute back and forth between both of our cities every single day. And it was, although it was a challenge to hear some of the prejudices about our community that were voiced, it was, it was equally encouraging and heartwarming to hear the ultimate result and, and that, that regionalism and the support between both sides of the river and an understanding of the, of the critical importance of basic transit infrastructure, notwithstanding the temporary reductions in transit that were reported in the B yesterday, that of course that, it would be foolish to think that that was a signal that transit itself was no longer needed for either in our community or elsewhere. But, but I know that wouldn't have happened without a lot of diplomacy on behalf of the city and its official position and its official priority for this project by you, councilmember Ledesma. So thanks so much for, for taking that on. Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District met on September ninth. Just reporting since our last meeting, last, not special meeting. We received reports on the impacts of COVID nineteen on the district. Primarily those have been on staffing, just like here at city staffing revenue and some reporting delays. And the twenty twenty wildfire, wildfire smoke impacts. We heard about active monitoring and public messaging, which you all can recall by, at September ninth, there were already two point two million acres burned in the state. And we're, at that time, we're only halfway through the traditional fire season. So the air resources, air quality management district was, was requested an air resource advisor that needed to be requested through CAL FIRE. And that, that individual, that advisor helped provide forecasting and models and additional monitors were added to, to evaluate our air quality in the, in the district. And smoke alerts and public outreach were shared with Solano and Yolo Public Health Departments. And updating and expanded wildfire information pages and public resources were provided to the public by the, by the district. We also adopted the eight hour ozone reasonable available control technology state implementation plan and emission statement certification, and we approved our budget for this year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And with all the concerns about the future impacts of COVID on our budget, just like we're facing in the, in the city. Yolo County Housing met on September sixteenth. We amended our housing choice voucher payment standards. We appointed an interim CEO, received a COVID nineteen organizational status update, and we reviewed an article on affordable housing and received public housing overview. Reclamation District is, is a, some of us recall, also met on September sixteenth. We approved a contract for the periodic urban pipe crossing video inspection of the district to Summit Pipeline and heard district and project updates. And then last week, the League of California Cities held its annual conference virtually. I was able to participate in thirteen sessions and those varied from hearing about rates, policies and reforms and how COVID nineteen will impact CalFirst employers to what to do when in-person engagement is impossible. As you can recall, as you can imagine, a lot of these were, were COVID focused. And we're hearing about how our colleagues around the state are dealing with, like we are dealing with issues related to, to this pandemic. Also housing law update and social, social media, how women in government can navigate their way to corporate boards and so forth. It was really well done, but just like meetings virtually, there's some things that the in-person, you're, you're missing those kinds of interfaces. You can't wander around the expo and meet with folks who provide services to the city. So some things were not happening as they normally would. But I, I think I, I sent commendations to the league staff for what they were able to pull off in, in the circumstance. And then Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District met earlier today. Received a EM two-five point two-five season report on November to February emissions. You have to try to hit a certain goal. There's some circumstances because of the, the smoke and fires in the, in the state will, were, where we will receive some less stringent looks, I think, this year. And we also talked about a voluntary don't light tonight program that we have in the district. We also did hear a twenty twenty wildfire smoke impact update and obviously significant impacts to our district forecasting models and continue to provide as much information as we can to the public. And finally, we heard Air Toxic Hot Spots Information Assessment Act, which is AV twenty-five eighty-eight, an annual report. And we've heard a public hearing on that, which is assessing impacts of nearby stationary sources on buildings that are next to those sources. So we have to provide that annual report. And we also did an air pollution patrol officer, a performance evaluation of our executive director. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Protem Sandin and Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District Board of Directors met today and discussed a variety of matters. The one that I wanted to report back on happens to do with the Confluence Regional Partnership Program. We received the annual report. And it's actually, it was a very good report. There's a lot of things that regional centers doing in the community, especially in Sacramento. That might include sewer lifeline rate assistance, something that I've reported back to this council and to the members of our community regarding sewer rate relief during COVID, which is still ongoing and still open for folks to participate. So if they are, if you're a local business owner and you're watching this or you know one, let them know that there is rate relief offered by regional sanitation if they did not know already. But also projects such as environmental stewardship, regional economic development, public education and other, other projects. And I thought are, many of which are pretty relevant to our city. I already spoke with our city manager regarding some opportunities where I think we need to work with regional sanitation. For example, they have a, the regional education, our public education programs. They have one tours through a natural habitat. But also they sponsor Sacramento City, or excuse me, Sec High School. They have a public service announcement program where they provide funding and prizes for a competition for local students who may be our mass media focused. And I, I've shared that with the West Sacramento Run, that at least one of the bases could be enhanced by opportunities for kids to either participate in high-quality internships and/or participate in programs that they offer in order to enhance their skills, such as digital badging or whatnot. And so I did signal to Christoph Dobson, who is the presenter, that we were interested in getting a little bit more information and working with them on how we can get programs on our side of the river. One of the other programs is a cleanup of American River. And it was a conversation about public bathrooms and renovating them. So that way, many folks who don't have access could use them instead of maybe, you know, going in the river. And I did discuss that with our city manager, as also potential, we are, we are partners who share a river. And we have many activities that happen in our city as well. And if there's funding or potential opportunities that could be supported by regional sanitation, I think we should definitely tap into those. At this point, the only two representatives to the board are myself and supervisor Oscar Viegas, and who unfortunately wasn't there today, but I was proud to represent on both of our behaves and really shed attention to the needs we have in West Sacramento and also represent by sharing some of the things we have going on that could definitely complement or be complemented by partnership. Secondly, both Mayor Protem Sandin and I met on October fifth with the city school two by two. And we met to receive a proposed update by Washington Unified School Board Trustees on their reopening plans, with all of which are tentative and can change from day to day based on public health orders and the current state of affairs with COVID nineteen. But there was a suggestion of consideration of smaller cohorts of children that are participating in school that would go in, in kind of a scaled fashion with priority given to special needs or English language learners or other kids with heightened need to be back into a school environment. And we talked about how we could work together, specifically coordinating the identification of gaps. And Washington Unified is going back to do a survey with some of the households to see what types of childcare needs they might have. And also we are going to be researching on our end, the city, the existing childcare providers who might be able to participate in providing childcare for, for families in need as we reopen and parents are going back to work. This is something that I've spoken about on several occasions with this council as it's, it's an issue that hits very close to home. And just yesterday, yesterday morning at five thirty AM, I'm standing out in front of my house waiting for a colleague because I was going to do some business very quickly. And he showed up on his way to work and as he rolled down the window, there's three kids in the car, young kids. And I was surprised to see them because it's, it's pitch dark at five thirty in the morning and cold. And I said, I didn't realize the kids were with you. And he said, you know, we don't have much chances. We do what we got to do, right? And it's true. I mean, this is a business owner in the city of West Sacramento, one of our Chamber of Commerce members, somebody who I sit with at the Rotary Club. And his children are certainly getting a lesson in resilience. But at the same time, many of us could certainly appreciate that, you know, children getting up at five thirty AM just for the opportunity to do distance learning from a local business because they don't have any childcare at home. That would allow them a little bit more convenience. I mean, that, that, that's our issue. Like, these are our families and this is something that I, I feel that we need to take very seriously and move forward to create opportunities. And hopefully we can find a way. I know that we, we have committed to working with Washington Unified on identifying what opportunities we have and trying to close the gap so that way we can meet those needs. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple of reports. My part, the SACOG board met at the, at the end of September. And then our transportation committee met again at the beginning of this month. At our last meeting, I reported on the round one of the two-part boxing match we were engaged in with some other folks in the, in the region, particularly Sacramento County, but, but a few others as well, and how we had prevailed in round one around a proposal to re, essentially to reallocate the transportation funds in the region away from communities that are growing or that are contributing more to climate emission reductions or to affordable housing production and instead to allocate funding on the basis of existing population, which would significantly advantage a couple of large jurisdictions in the region and significantly disadvantage us. And so we, on the first vote, we, we won. It came back for a second round in, in, at the board meeting in September. And we averted the, the final war. And Sacramento County agreed about halfway through the meeting to, to withdraw and to, and to respect the decision that had been made at the prior meeting. Essentially, we, we took the final vote in September. But the, the nine-month battle that we've been engaged in or protect the, you know, the future, not just of our own city, but, but of the whole region and our environmental sustainability, our social equity, our affordable housing, the whole, you know, all of those policy objectives, in addition to investing in places like ours, was, was one. So it was a very significant step forward for the region as a whole. And I particularly want to acknowledge the work of Lucas Scherix, the Davis City Council member, who's the current chair of SACOG, who just did an outstanding job of, you know, where possible, bringing people together and where not possible, you know, rolling up his sleeves, getting out the knife and, and getting, you know, getting in the fight with, you know, that we needed to have. And a lot of folks came, came forward in order to engage and to kind of recommit to the idea that we're a region together, that, that although we may represent individual cities, you know, folks in our, in our, you know, most, most people in our community work outside of our borders. And some of our, some of our greatest small businesses in town are operated by folks who live in other cities. And many of our residents are entrepreneurs in Sacramento or elsewhere in the region too. That the borders matter and they matter a lot to us as public officials, but they matter less to people's daily lives and their economy and the challenges and opportunities they face. And so I'm very proud that we, we came together on the board unanimously adopted the funding, the funding framework. And so now it's time to start submitting applications. And I know, I know our staff is, is actively doing so in, in order to compete for those funds in the coming, in the coming months. SACOG has also established, and I'm one of the folks helping to lead the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Task Force. It is the first time that SACOG has taken up this topic outside of a legally mandated environmental justice initiative. And so some of you may be contacted. There's currently an audit, racial equity audit that is underway of SACOG being, being started at our own request in order to ask, you know, ask ourselves the hard questions, look in the mirror about what we're doing as a region, what are formula for, what kinds of things our funding formulas lead to and support? And how we can make sure that the investments in a strong economy and a sustainable future in the region support equity and inclusion and justice as well. And our, our community is definitely at the forefront of that. And so I'll keep you abreast of what's going on there. Similarly, at the US Conference of Mayors, we held our, our quarterly leadership meeting this month, including the, the, the National Mayor's Working Group on, on dismantling systemic racism, which is the council now, I co-chair with alongside the mayor of Atlanta, Keisha Lance Bottoms. And we've advanced in, in cooperation with a different task force, a set of policies around policing, which have, have received a lot of praise and kudos, not from the civil rights community around the country, but also from there's, it's very actionable and Chief Strange has, has, has had the chance to review them as well. There's a lot of lessons in there and some lessons from us that appear in some of that work I presented at the, at the session about, about what we're doing here in the city with the, with the reorganization of the police department and the creation of the new division that's focused on crisis intervention and mental health services where that's appropriate. And I gotta tell you, there were, there were dozens of mayors that said, I've been thinking about this. We've been, you know, we've been talking about it, some of, some of them for months. It's, it's great that you guys are actually doing it, like you implemented it within a couple of weeks or months. Can you send me the staff report? Can you send me the job descriptions? I just want to get to work and thank you, West Sacramento, for leading the way. And so obviously we're, we're, it's underway right now and congratulations to Taylor Nelson, the new manager of the division. I think we're all super excited about, about her and the work that's ongoing in the department and all of the, and all the support within and outside of the department that this, that this, this reform is achieving and the promise and the positivity around it. And of course, it's a work in progress and we're going to learn as we go. That's how we do things here in West Sacramento. But I, but I just want the council and, and chief and city manager and all the others who worked on this to know that even, even, even the act of acting and moving forward has garnered a lot of national attention from folks who really wanted to do something but didn't know what. And you've given them a template for, for meaningful and real action. Then lastly, the, our, the council's co-ad hoc COVID, COVID nineteen emergency guidance subcommittee comprised of myself and the mayor Protem, we've met, I think, five times since the last council meeting on a, on a regular basis to continue the, to continue to give the, our, our director of emergency services guidance and feedback as we proceed, including as, as late as today. And, you know, obviously during this period, we, we, as a county and, and in the city as well, achieved a significant, you know, significant progress in terms of cases and positivity rates and some of the key indicators. You know, we met this, we met today and I, and I think it's just appropriate to, to, to give, you know, the, give a, a yellow flag warning sign that, that there are some, there are some troubling indicators in, in, in the last several days and, and weeks as the, as the next round of reopening occurred in terms of some of the, the metrics, the health and safety metrics that, that the state evaluates and that we care deeply about. And it's going to be very important that we, that we, as a community, you know, maintain the solidarity and continue to avoid gatherings, especially house parties. I mean, it's, it's very clear that this is, that's, that's one of our sources of biggest problems in the community. And if we don't, and, and that we're very careful as Halloween on a Saturday comes forward and then Thanksgiving, that there is a real risk that, 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 that we may, it, it's not an inexorable walk of progress from purple to red to orange. And we could slip and, and that's, that's problematic, both from a health perspective, but also for all of the local small businesses and the folks who are planning distanced events and, and folks who are thinking about preschools and everything else. So much of our daily life and our economy depends on, on, on continuing to make progress. And, and it's just so critical that we, that we double down on that because there are some signs right now that are, that are, that are discouraging. And we cannot, and our local businesses really can't afford to, to go back or to continue to be on this yo-yo. And it's not the fault of the metrics. It's, it's, it's on us as a community to, 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 to continue to do what we know works. We, we achieved, we achieved a lot at the end of September and the, and the beginning of October. And we, we've just got to get back on track in order to make sure that we can protect our health and also protect our local economy, entrepreneurs and workers. All right. So that's it on item one B. Let's, we have no appointments under item one C this evening. So that's going to bring us then to our consent agenda. I'm sorry, item two, which is our presentation, presentation of a proclamation recognizing Kelly Wilson for her contributions to fighting food insecurity in our community. And I'm, I'm, I'm so excited that, that we're taking this up tonight. But let me first ask if there is a motion on the proclamation before we, before we present it. Okay. It's been moved by councilmember Roscoe and second by councilmember Ledesma. Madam clerk? Madam Clerk, if you would please call the role on the proclamation.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. All right, so the proclamation has been adopted. It's good because Kelly is here to receive it. And Kelly, I was going to say a word in just a moment, but this is a proclamation honoring Kelly for being an everyday hero in our community and in some ways extraordinary, stepping forward during crisis and thinking about what can I do? What can I do as an individual, as an individual with a family and friends to make a difference in the lives of other people as the community is experiencing crisis? But not just as a community, individual people who need, in the basics, need food just to survive. And so many folks in the community have stepped forward and volunteered at the food bank and at food distributions and with the Yolo County Children's Alliance. You know, all of us have been participating in those activities. But Kelly took a step forward. She'd done that volunteer work. And she, it kind of reminds me of Councilmember Roscoe and her drive to create West Sac Kids Back, you know, a new nonprofit, just to go out there and do something and make an institution. Kelly said, it's not just my hours that matter. I'm going to bring people together and create something lasting, something bigger than myself and my own volunteerism in order to connect people in our community that she knows and that she can reach that want to do something for others, that want to contribute, that want to make an impact, connect them to the services, to the institutions, to things like the food bank and other partners in order to make their desire to help real. And so what we see is both the benefits to folks who are experiencing food insecurity, who Kelly and her team have helped to get food too. But also, nearly as important, the folks in our community who wanted, have wanted all throughout this emergency to have a way to step up and help themselves. And Kelly, through her founding of Care for All, has made that possible for so many other people who are sitting at home or, you know, wrestling their hands like, how can I make a difference? What can I do? And Kelly answered the call and created something really special. And so that's tonight's proclamation on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of the whole community, recognizes Kelly's extraordinary work in the community and her efforts and her leadership. I know we've all seen Kelly on Good Day Sacramento, in the warehouse, doing the work, rolling up her sleeves, inspiring others to do so. But she's with us tonight to receive the proclamation along with Larry and Lauren from our parents. And thank you all for joining us. And Kelly, let me ask you to say a few words and maybe make a pitch for the work that you're doing and encourage others and inspire others to join.
First of all, thank you so much, Mayor and councilmembers, for recognizing my service to the community. It's really a pleasure for me to do. I really enjoy seeing people just being so happy to receive these boxes of food. Yeah, so we're really focusing on addressing food insecurity in our community. And so we have certain, most of them are elderly people who can't go out during this time of COVID-19 because they're afraid that they're going to contract the illness. So we deliver boxes from the Yolo Food Bank in Woodland right to their doorstep. And yeah, it's just a really truly heartwarming experience. I have a website that it's Care for All. I can type it in the chat. But it says kind of about me and it has a blog that kind of outlines all that we do for our community. But it's really a great pleasure of mine and I'm really thankful that I'm able to give back to my community in a great way.
Kelly, thank you so much and thanks for joining us and on behalf of the council. Thanks to you. And I know, we all know, efforts like these are, they are a family affair, both in the raising and of the values that we instill in our families, but also in the sweat equity, the support and everything else that we know. All three of you are part of this efforts as well. But I've seen other young people, other older folks who have been excited at the chances that you've given them to be a part of this, Kelly. So congratulations. Councilmember Roscoe, I saw you were ringing in.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, okay, first off, thank you so much for being here tonight. And let me start with your parents. Clearly, you have two people who absolutely have invested a lot of time and great values. And I want to commend them for, you know, just doing such a fantastic job. As the mayor mentioned, you know, people like you represent, Kelly. People like you represent the future and people that put service above self and really do step forward and teach their peers what it feels like and also what it looks like to be a servant leader. I'm just really enthusiastic about everything that you have committed. I wanted to also say that, you know, for personal reasons, my mother, she has an oxygen tank. And I volunteer at, you know, food distributions on weekends. And I think about all of the folks who can't be out there because, you know, if she contracts anything, it's over, you know? The oxygen tank and the compromised condition. You know, the fact that she would go out of your way to make sure that folks have access, that you have, I mean, you do have an idea clearly because you see it firsthand. But on behalf of those who haven't personally thanked you, I thank you because it's a big deal. We're talking many of whom are just on fixed incomes. And even just, you know, getting a Walmart delivery, for example, is a scary thing, you know, to have to disinfect everything before you consume it. So what you're doing is fantastic and I'm really excited for you. And I know I can speak on behalf of the entire council and we're super proud to have you in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Kelly. Yeah, I'm just as we wrap, I just want, and Councilmember Roscoe also touched on this, it's, you know, because I've seen her out at all those, pretty much every Saturday, just working hour after hour after hour. And, you know, we all try to do what we can and, you know, you see, but you could have been one of those folks that like just shows up at a food distribution, takes a picture of yourself, you know, doing food for five minutes and then leave. But this isn't just about, you know, the one moment of food. This is about the shopping, the packing, the delivering, the committing, right? You know, that I will deliver food, you know, six days from now and my whole team will do that. Organizing that, running a company, basically. And then, you know, anybody that started a nonprofit organization, the paperwork, the waiting, the bylaws. I mean, it's the amount of effort and coordination and the completeness of the work that you've done here. And what that sets you up for as an entrepreneur, as a leader, is really also very special and very extraordinary. So again, thank you. Keep at it. Congratulations and thanks for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, good night. All right, so with that, then we'll proceed to our consent agenda, which is items three through 11. Are there items on consent to remove or any separate question or comments?
Do we need to vote on the proclamation? I can't remember if we had to vote.
We did.
We did? Okay, I said aye.
And you voted yes.
Okay, good.
All right, any items to remove or separate question or comment on consent?
Six.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Roscoe?
Six, please.
Six, okay. Councilmember Guerrero?
Item 10.
Any others? All right then, item six is Consideration of Adoption of Resolutions 20-21 and 20-90 Approving the Statewide Park Development and Community Revitalization Program Grant Applications for Two Park Sites. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. It's more of a comment than it is a question for Tracy. You know, when I first started at the city in volunteer service, I was with the Parks and Community Services Commission under Bob Johnston. And, you know, Bob was great, but when we got Cindy Tuttle, it was even more wonderful because, you know, nobody can match the energy and enthusiasm of Cindy Tuttle. But when we got Tracy Michael in this position, I realized that she is pretty darn phenomenal. I had an opportunity to recently, and we've been working together on several things, whether it's childcare, early childhood education or parks. But recently, it was about parks and spent a few hours talking about this particular item and many others that she is championing in our city. And as many of you have heard in the past, you know, for me, having four kids, you know, having safe places for kids to play and learn and grow is part of what we should be doing as a city. It should be one of our top priorities. And I am fully in support of this item. I know that we tried in the past and unfortunately, some of our parks just aren't competitive due to income limitations or other factors or just the fact that it's a pretty competitive place out there for many people that need good parks. But the two that she is fighting for here, one of which is West Acre Park, which I call Evergreen Park. It's one of those places where our kids go to practice baseball and soccer. But also the one 1504 Fallbrook, which is tucked in away in the Westmore Oaks community. That could certainly use some attention. I bring this up because as we consider these two, we also, you know, consider that we just accomplished one of the biggest park renovations with Memorial Park, but also are embarking upon others such as Bright Park in different phases. And I know Bright Park isn't competitive for many grants and that's largely due to its proximity to a high-income neighborhood nearby. But it needs a lot of work, as we all know. It's one of our biggest parks and if not our biggest park. And, you know, we entertain lots of soccer and lots of baseball and softball every year. And it needs millions of dollars worth of attention. So, you know, it's wonderful to see Tracy going out there and fighting for grants and partnerships with local businesses or individuals or organizations like West Sac Play that go out and commit their hard work to making sure that we have park coverings. But I just really wanted to shine a light on, you know, our director because she's done a phenomenal job. She's not one that toots her own horn, that's for sure. But I'm here to toot tonight and, well, wait, that didn't come out too right either, so joke's on me. But I'm here to toot her horn for all of the investments that she has made and all of the hard work and dedication that she's committed to improving our local parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. That brings us to item 10, which is Consideration of Establishing a Preferred Executive Search Partners List and Executing Professional Services Contracts to Conduct As-Needed Executive Recruitment Citywide Over a Five-Year Period. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, could I, I might have more questions if I get a brief presentation about this particular item.
So we are looking to establish a preferred partner list to conduct executive recruitments for our department head classifications over the next five years. At this time, we currently have three vacancies at our department head level. And we have identified three partners to put on this list based on the RFP that we conducted. And the reason why we chose the appropriation of $250,000 not to exceed that limit over that five-year period is because based on the average of the last five years, we have conducted 10 recruitments. So that's an average of two per year. And with the responses that we received from the firms, the averaged service cost is about $25,000 per recruitment.
So we're investing about $25,000 per recruitment max?
That is their base service fee. And then if we choose to do any additional services with them, mainly community engagement surveys or things like that, there would be additional cost for those.
I see. So we're looking at setting aside $250,000 for establishing an executive search process for vacant positions.
I would have to find out from Reverter Ray, for our Administrative Services Director, of how truly it would be set aside or if it's a not-to-exceed cost. The thought is that we will have appropriate budget schemes for each department. And then if needed, we would come to council for appropriation of funds if that would not cover it.
I see. So we could exceed $250,000?
Well, it is not to exceed $250,000.
Not to exceed $250,000, I see. Okay, I guess looking historically at successful recruitment that we've had internally as far as seeing, you know, like Tracy Michael, for example, is an example. And others we've seen where we have people, I mean, I don't know if this search is like nationwide or regional or, I don't recall a process existing before like this in our executive recruitment process. So this seems new to me. Is this new?
It is barely new. We did two RFQs, I believe, in 2008 and 2012 for two department head positions. The past couple of years, Human Resources has conducted them in-house. Most recently, we did do a Community Development Director Recruitment, which was unsuccessful in finding a candidate. Generally, working with these three firms, they are known nationwide. And so that would be able to kind of expand our scope of recruiting as well as being able to utilize their contacts to get hopefully successful candidates for us.
Okay, so we're looking to search beyond West Sacramento, beyond our region altogether is the goal.
We can determine that with each recruitment that we do when we come up with a recruitment strategy and we solicit it with the three partners that we did establish. We would identify kind of what our parameters would be ahead of time and then that would dictate how they do their search for us.
Okay. Well, while I am supportive of doing a rigorous recruitment, executive recruitment process, I still would like to see what we can do to maintain the costs low and search for somebody from within for, you know, I think there's that flexibility with the proposal. That we don't have to spend the money if we can do initial recruitment process internally and have a hard time to go via.
That is correct. And there is the possibility to, for Human Resources to assist in the process, which would cut down on some of the expenses based on what all the current services we utilize with the firm select.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So Caitlin, the attachment, the document that we have, and thank you for it. I mean, the council sort of unanimously directed that we move in this direction at the retreat based on the clear need to deal with hiring a diverse executive leadership in the city, where we have not made as much progress and to some extent, we've gone backwards. And so it was determined to be a critical need for the future of the city that we get the kind of professional assistance that a city that is growing and is attracting the kind of talent that we have and can into the future, get some of that support. But it really, the principal focus and interest in doing this was on the diversity side. And so the RFQ, I just want to, I want to ask you a little bit. So the RFQ was, the, you know, certainly talks about the diversity dimension to it, but it's a relatively small amount of the points that were awarded in the review of the application. And that's the area that we really felt we needed external. I think the city manager said, look, I think we've done everything we know how to do on the diversity side. We need additional assistance there. So I just want to, I want to get an understanding that we're not hiring, we're not just like going outside to hire firms for the purpose of having an executive search for them. Are they, are these, are the folks that are going to be on our list, are they really excellent at recruiting, you know, talented, diverse pools of candidates in a way that we wouldn't be able to do if we just ran the searches internally?
I would say definitely yes. Based on the, and forgive me for not knowing 100% of the specifics of the proposals that they did submit, but a lot of the responses, they had to provide their most recent, I think, as, most recent is three years successful placements, as well as some of them provided the diversity of those, as well as the retention of those diverse candidates. And the three firms that we did select were very high in those areas that I think would be able to get us those diverse candidates from outside the region, inside the region and know where to successfully recruit and have a plan to recruit for them.
Okay, terrific. I mean, I'm definitely supportive of doing this, just as we all expressed earlier as well. The, we're not budgeting, we're not budgeting anything for the $250,000, as you've noted. This is, the contract is a different thing than spending the money. As the city manager would be proposing to proceed each budget year, we would have to make an allocation in order to proceed. This doesn't, this does not transcend our budget process. our budget process. And so we would be doing that. And I just want to signal that for me, these for the first couple that we're doing, the first two or three that we're doing are going to be the test. Like, is this producing what we're really looking for, which is, which is, you know, kind of transformative leadership in our in diversity in our pool? That and it is, and I want to emphasize, it's not, it's not necessarily, it's not about trying to find, you know, candidates in Arkansas or Utah or New York City. I mean, if that's where great candidates are, that's terrific. But it, we have a diverse pool of candidates inside city government today. We need to do better and we are. But so this is not, this is not in any way to suggest that we're not going to be continuing to hire internally. We have had very successful recruitments and appointments in that in that regard, where we have where we've run into challenges in part because, you know, talented, diverse pools are in demand and we don't, we don't go out and recruit for a public works director every other day. So we're not in that pool. So getting experts that can help us in that space helps. But but for me, at least, I'm going to be paying attention to how much do we really, how much better can we get with this help in the first couple of the first couple of searches? And then we'll see whether or not we decide we want to allocate the budget funding later for any further searches into the future. But this is a good start. So Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo a little bit of what you said you got to, what I was recollecting from our earlier meetings. It seems like the forever planning meeting we had at the beginning of the year. But yeah, we had some pretty robust conversation around the need to make sure we search as best we can, have the tools available to make sure we can attract and recruit diverse talent. And hopefully it does, you know, again, looking internally is certainly an important first start. But and then, and then the other part of that equation was, was as part of that broadening of the talent pool and is also to look at our practices and interviewing and convening a diverse panel. And so I'm hoping that we're following up on those tactics as well or those strategies as well. It's hugely important. And yeah, I was just going to bring up the point you, I think you got to mayor around, just because we have it doesn't mean we use it. I mean, we've made choices before in hiring not to not to engage recruiting firms. So this gives us the flexibility to have somebody if we have to right away. So anyway, just wanted to emphasize the points that we we wanted to get there.
Yeah, our best, the best outcome is that we learned the secret sauce from these firms in the first couple of searches and then then we can do it ourselves. So, right? Okay. So with that, then those are all the comments that we had and questions we had on the consent agenda. So is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommend, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sandin?
Aye.
Mayor Kabaldum?
Aye. With that, the consent agenda is adopted. That will bring us into item 12, which is public hearing to consider resolution 20-97, adopting a substantial amendment to the 2020 annual action plan for the community development block grant program, or CDBG, and resolution 20-98, adopting an amendment to the citizen participation plan for administration of the community development block grant program. Mr. Warta?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you noted, this evening, staff is requesting that the council open a public hearing to consider a substantial amendment to the 2020 CDBG annual action plan and an amendment to the CDBG citizen participation plan. Upon closing of the public hearing, staff is recommending that the council adopt resolution 20-97, adopting the substantial amendment to the 2020 annual action plan, and resolution 20-98, adopting the amendment to the citizen participation plan. The substantial amendment to the 2020 annual action plan allocates the city's CDBG coronavirus funds for site acquisitions for interim non-congregate housing for homeless individuals or at risk of being homeless individuals to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city's CDBG coronavirus funds total $602,874. Additionally, the substantial amendment also allocates $600,000 of CDBG program income funds for the same coronavirus-related activity. Staff's allocations follow a review of eligible CDBG coronavirus activities and council feedback from the July 15th CDBG workshop. Lastly, the substantial amendment also allocates $113,432 of program income funds for general administration of the CDBG program. The amendment to the citizen participation plan incorporates expedited procedures made available by the CARES Act for amending annual action plans and consolidated plans for CDBG activities that respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. These expedited procedures reduce the public comment period to no fewer than five days and allow for virtual public hearings as long as national or local health authorities recommend social distancing and limit public gatherings. No comments were received during the five-day public review period for this public hearing, which began on September 30th. This concludes my brief presentation, but I would like to restate that upon closing of the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt resolution 20-97 and resolution 20-98. Thank you for your time and I'm available for for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warta. And this is an important item. However, it does flow directly from the decisions that the council already directed as part of the review of the CDBG program that I described earlier. And it is quite contingent, right? The these allocations and the revisions are intended to support Project Home Key and related work that is underway at the right now. And we are both awaiting word from the state on Project Home Key allocations and in active discussions with potential properties. And therefore, you know, we may be back with a different amendment at a different point. But this is the, this is the state of emergency. You know, you roll with the opportunities and that's what's being proposed here tonight. So I appreciate the the presentation. Are there questions for Mr. Warta before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I mean, I could also wait after the public hearing.
All right. Well, let's open the public hearing then on item 12. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments that have been submitted in part of the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. We did not receive any public comments for this item.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Then with that, we will close the public hearing on item 12. We're adjourned to the council. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, Guerrero, thank you very much for your diligence and, you know, your expertise in understanding this. This is not very easy and you've done a very good job in capturing all the necessary information and going through all the work in establishing what we can do for housing for those that are unsheltered. And so it's been a long, a long few, you know, months that you've been working on this and the whole team. So I just want to thank you for that and the entire team. I do have some questions regarding the proposed funding amount and also just how it relates to what is on page one for the activity of the Washington neighborhood and that allocation amount. Is there any correlation between the two?
No, there is not. The funds that are being allocated now are additional funds that the city received for the CARES funds that were allocated for the CDBG program. So the new allocations that are being proposed today have no effect on previous allocations to the annual action plan. This is just additional funding that we received. Again, the CDBG coronavirus funds and then additional program income that we also received from the sale of a city on site for the permanent supportive housing project. So these funds are not available when the normal allocations on the 2020 annual action plan were made and will have no impact whatsoever.
Okay, so the $458,852 for the sidewalk lighting and landscape improvements, that continues on as far as your plan is concerned?
That is correct. That is correct.
And then so for CDBG, the new CDBG, the requirement is to spend it on housing? So just what so what are the requirements we could spend this money for?
So the CDBG coronavirus funds have to be spent on COVID-19 related activities. There's a broad range of activities that can be done with that, but it does have to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic in one way, shape or form.
Okay. So at this point, we're looking at motel acquisition from this proposal, which could be modified to something in the future.
That is correct. In the event that, you know, the motel acquisitions do not come to fruition, staff would have to come back with a second amendment to the 2020 annual action plan to reallocate those funds for other COVID-related activities.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there other questions?
Move to approve.
Seeing no further debate or discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Excuse me. Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Kabaldum?
Aye. All right, that motion carries. Let's wish ourselves and our staff and everyone else luck in in these efforts. I mean, it is, it is so critical that we find ways to assure the folks who have been the most medically compromised and the most at risk during the pandemic that we that we figure how to sustain their shelter during and the supportive services, the funding sources run out. And this is our best hope at the moment. And so let's cross our fingers that both the state and and the property owners with which we have to negotiate are, you know, the stars line up and we're able to. Bring this to Council.
Ms. Berlin? Hey, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The only update to the calendar is that on Saturday, October 31st, the Rec Center will have a drive-through trick-or-treating event. And I believe it starts from four o'clock to 6:00 PM. And that's all for me.
All right. Thank you very much. City man?
No reports tonight. Thank you.
But did you, did you indicate that you don't have a report?
Yes, I did. No report. Thank you.
Oh, no. City attorney, sorry.
No, no report tonight.
All right. So members of the council, we have no future agenda item requests that have been submitted. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move?
I don't.
Mayor Protam Sandin is signed by Councilmember Roscoe. That the meeting be adjourned. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to adjourn?
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sandin?
Aye.
And Mayor Kabaldum?
Aye. All right. With that, the motion.